To the March 25th School Committee meeting. We're so thrilled to have all of you here. Thank you so much for being here, for coming out tonight. We're just could not be more pleased to see all of you in front of us. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Public Access Cable. The school committee would like to recognize and thank Tim Riley for taping tonight's production. East Hampton Public Access Cable stations, channels five, nineteen, and twenty, is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. Superintendent Follinsby, would you give us the announcements?
I would be happy to. The next school committee meetings are April 8th and 22nd, 2014. The Special Education Parent Advisory Committee will meet from 7:00 to 9:00 PM in the second floor conference room here at 50 Kason Avenue on the following dates. April 9th, May 14th, and June 11th. There is no school on Friday, April 18th, due to Good Friday. There is no school April 21st to 25th, due to Patriots Day and spring break. There is a half day of school on Thursday, May 1st, due to Teacher Professional Development Day, and the East Hampton High School prom is scheduled for Saturday, May 17th, at the Delaney House. There is no school on Monday, May 26th, due to Memorial Day. East Hampton High School awards night is Wednesday, June 4th, and East Hampton High School graduation is Friday, June 6th.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Do we have any gifts to report?
We have correspondence as well tonight, yes?
Oh, I'm sorry, correspondence.
Yes, okay, so we do have a letter from Lori Ingraham, one of our committee members, who is reporting that she attended the MAS C sponsored conference regarding the new park test.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the committee know that a couple Saturdays ago, I attended a Division V school committee meeting that was held in North Hampton regarding the park that followed along what Shirley had taught us all, and it was extremely informative, for me at least, so I just wanted to share with you that presentation and my notes that are in there. So if you have any questions, let me know, but it was really good. So they had several school committee members from Franklin County there who had the bigger concerns that they don't even have internet access. So not only is this test supposed to be done online, we have schools that don't even have internet access yet. So that was quite a good discussion that we had, but if you look through it, if you have any questions, just let me know, but it was good to go to, so.
Thank you for attending.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Gifts, now gifts.
We'd like to move to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts from Mr. Thomas Connor at Florence Savings Bank for the generous donation of $1,000 to help support the advanced placement students at East Hampton High School.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda, we're going to move to the Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching Awards, and I'm going to turn that over to Superintendent Follinsby.
Can I do that first? Or you and...
After, yeah.
Yes.
Tell us about that.
Thank you, Deb Luizneal. We are very excited to introduce this evening our three award winners for the Pioneer Valley on the day that we announced the awards, and it was, I say to everybody, it's really one of the best days in the whole year for me as a superintendent. Excellence in Teaching Awards. They will be feted at a lovely dinner at the Log Cabin on May 6th. These awards are given every year to teachers who are voted for excellence by their peers They receive a number of different prizes and awards, and we're just so very proud and by their building administrator. of them, as we are proud of our past winners of this very prestigious award, so one more And so this evening, I would ask Katie Baruvi from the elementary schools to come forward, big hand for our wonderful... please, and... (applause)
Okay. Next on our agenda is a public speak time.
And Jan Diubel, who is from Whitebrook Middle School.
This will be an opportunity for anyone who would like to speak about anything not on
And Sue Mason from our high school.
our agenda this evening. So this won't be an opportunity for talking about our budget. That will come a little bit later in the evening, but right now, it would be for anyone who would like to speak about something not on the agenda. If you would, if you'd come forward.
Congratulations.
Shirley would just like to ask if people in the audience could move towards the center.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Those standing would be able to have seats on the ends, if that's possible.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it. So those of you standing, you're welcome to get a seat here now as people make a little shift. Thank you, everybody.
Would anyone like to come and speak on a topic not on the agenda? If so, if you'd state your name, where you're from, and keep your comments to two or three minutes, that would be great. Okay, very good. We're going to move on now to a presentation by Maren Goldstein on energy consumption. Maren?
Good evening, everybody. Okay, so I'm here as the chairman of the Energy Committee, working with the mayor and the city to look at our energy consumption, and energy consumption also equals cost, and so I think it's actually very appropriate that we can start our discussion on the budget tonight with looking at the cost that we have to our buildings and our facilities, which is a very, it's an important part of the whole equation. So, wanted to start off that one of the things that the city is, is a green community. This is a Green Community Act that was passed in our state in 2008, and the purpose of the program is to reduce the overall municipal energy consumption by 20%, and it's also to increase renewable energy sources in municipalities. So that's a little bit of what the purpose is. In order to start looking at our energy, we did a baseline in the city for the fiscal year of 2009, and just so that people understand, MMBTUs is a common thermal unit, which basically allows everything from gasoline to natural gas, electricity, all to be brought to a same common unit, and so that's how this is all put into MMBTUs. So as a municipal entity, we use over 46,000 MMBTUs, and what, that's just sort of gives you the baseline, and of that, you can see that the schools was using less than 50% in 2009. In 2013, so last fiscal year, unfortunately, we're still increasing our energy consumption as opposed to decreasing it, and one of the largest places of growth is actually within the schools, and so that's what I'm here to talk about tonight in particular. So to start with, though, we are succeeding in some places. Public works is consistently down by 14% at this point. The fuel use of our vehicles is also down, as well as the streetlights that were put in for LEDs has also helped reduce our energy consumption in this city. However, we're not succeeding everywhere, and so the schools' energy consumption has grown by 13,000, excuse me, 13%, which is an additional cost of around $21,000 every year. The administration has also grown slightly. So when we look at energy use, we can see by each of our different school buildings where the use is. So these are all of our different schools. We have a number of different buildings, and so we have a much higher use across our whole school program, and you can see that some of them are smaller, but particularly when you get down to Whitebrook Middle School, we are using over 11,000 MMBTUs. And for you remember back to how much we do for a whole city, Whitebrook Middle School is currently consuming over 25% of all energy used by the municipality. And so it is a sort of elephant in the room in terms of consuming energy, as well as thereby cost that's having to go into a building that's very inefficient. So when we look at that, Whitebrook Middle School, if we dive deeply into just Whitebrook, we look at that Whitebrook Middle School costs over $80,000 annually to put energy into it, whether it's our natural gas to heat the space, to the electricity, and one of the things that's also important is that because of our student body and where we house them, that building is, has less than, or approximately 60% of our capacity for students. So that doesn't really affect a whole lot, the amount of energy we have to go into it, because you still have to heat it, you still have to do everything else with it, even though the student body is low. And so our opportunities for saving there is about energy efficiency measures. You can do things like improving the building envelope, have refrigeration controls, air system controls, radiators, all those different types of things that we can do. And so what I wanted to bring everybody's attention, though, and trying to think outside of the box around how we can bring funding to this kind of a project, and thereby ultimately bring funding to the schools, is that there are grants from our Green Communities program that we're part of. There is a grant application that can bring up to a quarter million dollars into the city. If you add on to that, because we're doing energy efficiency measures, there's utility money that can go to that as well, and so that oftentimes, for this range of money, we could easily have upwards of $100,000 additional coming in to this work through incentives. And so the project that we're currently looking at would look at the worst efficiency measures within Whitebrook, but really across all four, all five different schools, Whitebrook and Pippin would be the number first to, though. So looking at a project that we could upwards work on, $350,000, that would cost the city zero, and thereby bring an estimated annual savings because of the cost-saving measures that we put in place, that'd be a consistent, and again, we're talking in estimates here, but $53,000 a year forever because of energy efficiency savings, just after this one project. So next steps from here is that this grant application is due in pretty short order, and so what I'm looking for from the Energy Committee, who's been working on this so far, is looking at some sort of opportunity to work directly with either the school committee members or administration, looking for that you would need basically commitment for administration and management of the grant and dispersal of the funds to be able to move forward. We have already an energy consultant that's actually a vendor for the utility companies that we're going to be meeting with next week to be walking through the actual, what they're recommending for this project, to be able to get to the specifics of it. And then there's a second project as well, is that we have the ability to do a full, complete engineering analysis of Whitebrook Middle School that would cost, again, roughly around $20,000, that would really be able to go deeply into that building and say, "These are the measures that you need to do to look at this energy hog," basically, and how to correct that, and then out of that, be able to come up with a multi-year plan of how we can look at the energy use in that building and how to make changes that will then be able to be building upon each other, as opposed to having to tear out energy measures that we do, and be able to then create a longer-term plan there. So again, what this sort of brings up is that what kind of teaching positions, what kind of program would be able to be, happen within the schools if we had an additional $53,000 to be able to provide to the schools? What kind of measures or positions might be able to be funded if we engaged a thorough energy consumption, energy conservation measures by first starting with the energy plan at Whitebrook? And so I also ask that, because we do a lot of work on energy in my committee, I'd love for us, being the consumer of over 53% of the consumption of energy in the city, to have somebody from your team join our team, so we can start working on building those bridges and work together. And then the unfortunate thing is that if we don't do some program cuts, I mean, what kind of program cuts might we be looking at if we don't start making energy conservation measures within our schools? So if there's any questions, I'd feel free to feel like come to conversation now, or another time will up to you guys. Do you have any questions about this?
What do you think is the best path forward? Should we see if there's someone of us specifically to become like a liaison?
I think that would be wonderful, if we could have a liaison. We have had an initial meeting, the mayor and Maren Goldstein and myself, with a consultant to begin to talk about this, and we'll pursue this in a next meeting. There was a cost initially for the consultant or the audit, I believe it was, so that was one thing that, you know, we had reviewed, but yes, I think it's well worth considering and pursuing, along with the statements of interest that we're pursuing for our buildings.
First of all, I'd really like to thank Maren. I know how many meetings we've had, Maren, and how much work you've done on this, and just getting the data and usages, this has been, this has been a long time, and I think what he's looking for is he's looking for somebody from the school department or the school committee as like our grants coordinator to spearhead the project. That's what he, at this point in time, it needs somebody to take over this project, where they would apply for the grants, when if the grant would be hopefully successful, then they could take it from there.
So I think we certainly could pursue further conversations about this.
Okay, great. Well, I think this is, as we go in to start to talk about the budget, I think this is one of those places where we have many buildings, and it's a place that we can really look for sort of an out-of-the-box way of helping fund the school programs, which obviously, as a parent in East Hampton, I believe very strongly for. So I'd like to be able to move forward. You guys know how to get in touch with me? Oh, yes, there's more questions.
Well, my question is just in terms of the sequence of the timing, if there's a final, it sounds like there's the need for someone to work with the energy consultant in a week, and then there's, and we have a meeting in two weeks, and then we don't meet again until after the application is due. So in terms of timing, if, are we going to just move from this, or are we going to take some action this evening in terms of...
The timing is crucial. The deadline for the application is April 18.
I know that when Maren and I talked, we talked about that exactly, because apparently this is available again the following year from our conversation.
Yeah, every year this grant comes up, more or less, you know, we can never promise with the government, but it should be coming up again next year. But again, every year that we put this off means that much less funding here and now into our schools.
And also what Maren did is he brought together, the last meeting we had, he brought together Columbia Gas and West, yeah, Wamiko, and what they are willing to do is kick in the cost for this. Now, this is $250,000 of grant money. We know how important that is.
Definitely municipality or just for the schools piece? Just in terms of, I'm just thinking of the pool of people that we can draw on to address. The information that's here focuses on the schools. The grant, though, is, is it strictly limited just to an assessment at Whitebrook? So for example, or is it the school system school-wide?
So there's two different parts here. So from the Green Communities, it's about municipal use, but municipal use is, very much includes the schools. And so there's two pieces here. One is that for us to be able to apply for the grant this year, we've got to kind of move pretty quickly with the consultant that we're already working with that's doing analysis, that's going to be able to make recommendations for what we can work on this year with the approximate $350,000 money that would cost pretty much between incentives from the utilities, and this grant would provide the entire cost coverage. Then in terms of the future, and we're trying to make sort of long-term plans, the additional, which is, let's just go back to, oops, that killed it, from the additional...
The $20,000...
The $20,000 program that would allow us to do a thorough analysis of Whitebrook Middle School is, is something that is also funded, that's outside of the $350,000. That is what the utilities are able to provide, and that's again, being basically covered between Columbia Gas and Wamiko, being able to provide that full engineering study. And that we have more timing on, that's not as much a rush right now, but that's something that we want to be able to keep moving forward with, because that's when it really was going to be able to give us a thorough understanding of both this first project potential, as well as future projects.
If I can be so bold, I would happily say, I think at second or third glance, because I know we've had some outside conversations, this feels like a no-brainer to me, and it feels like it's high time that we take a close examination, and it also sounds like there's been a tremendous amount of work already done, so the data is already there. I'm not pie in the sky that will make the 18th, so please know that I'm not that naive. However, if anyone else isn't ready to jump into the pond, I would happily put my name forward to work with and be the bridge between the school committee and the energy committee. I think it's a beautiful wedded time, too, while we're looking at infrastructure and our, and our use of our facilities and how we go forward in the next three, five years, and it's just a really opportune time for us to consider this in the strategic planning time, and I don't, I personally don't see why we should wait two more weeks for the next meeting. I'm happy to jump in.
Maren, what do we have to do tonight? What do we have to do tonight as far as making that April 18 deadline? Who needs to be at that next meeting? What do we need as far as grant support? What do we need to resolve tonight before we leave this room to meet with the board?
Having somebody be able to come to next Tuesday's meeting is really great with both the TNT and Columbia representatives, and then be able to look at the grant application with me. I'm certainly, you know, I'm not trying to just hand this over, I'm certainly willing to work with you guys, but ultimately, it's going to need the school committee or school department, somebody within that to administer this grant and to be able to disperse the funds. So that's the piece that's, the commitment to that as well, then allows us to sort of keep moving forward with hopefully the April 18 deadline. The data that we're already working on covers the majority of what's needed for that April 18 deadline, and so with some outside work from that, I think that we could make that deadline and not be, it's not too pie in the sky.
Okay. Then I would say a motion to approve action of nominating Wendy Blumenthal to be a liaison to the Energy Committee, and to furthermore assist in the management and dispersal of the grants that we would hopefully be rewarded.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Can I vote?
Oh, wait a minute. Andy, you have something you wanted to add?
Right.
Yeah.
Before we...
Just for accounting and auditing purposes, for making it kosher, I appreciate your volunteering to be the liaison. The grants management, though, needs to be done via the school side.
That's what I was saying.
So we need to have, you know, school...
I think the liaison of that would be automatically working with whomever's doing grants.
Okay, I was just, the wording of the motion, I think, would maybe just need to be a little clarified, so that it's, you know, we need to have because of the whole audit aspect of these grants, so that it's a...
We need a second motion then, Andy, specifically directing the school department.
That would be correct.
That's what Maren was looking for. That's what I was trying to explain.
So I'd make a motion that in support of the liaison work that Wendy will be doing, that the school department supply the labor to apply and manage the grant. I'm drawing a blank on the best way to name it.
I'm just wondering, Peter, before you volunteer us to do the work and the labor, and I'm totally in favor of this, but I would like to get the information, you know, I would like to go to the meeting with Maren on Tuesday and get all the details on that, and then we'll go forward if it's something that we can do, and I, it looks like we will be able to do it. I just don't know whether we're going to be able to do it by the 18th, is my concern, given all the other things that are going on in the school department right now.
Is it, is it, what I guess I'm trying to sort out in my, in my motion is that for purposes going forward, I understand Andy said that it has to be school department's side.
Dispersed.
Disbursement, though, correct? Not written. I could, I could assist in the writing of it.
Andy, why don't you come up to the podium and help guide us into what we need to do next?
The paying of the bills makes sense, believe me, I want no part of that.
Anytime that there's discussion regarding or any awarding of funds and any mechanism whatsoever, the management of that being for a project along these lines, or any project that would be beneficial to the school, or for that matter, any municipal department, it's got to go through the internal operations of the school, district, city, business office, finance department downstairs.
We're talking about the application, specific to the application. We're nervous about the April 18 date. What sort of involvement does that office need to have with the application process? If Maren is willing to assist and Wendy is willing to throw her two cents in, what other oversight do we require?
The grants coordinator to carry the project, just like the others, school has many grants.
In the application process as well.
To when, when it's approved, to, you know, when the funds are approved.
Right. That I get. Backing that up, discussing the application.
In the application, though, I'm, my understanding is that you have to identify the grants coordinator.
Exactly.
So that has to be a school person through the school operation, so that's the, that's what needs to occur.
So I'm just wondering if you can help us frame this motion. I'm wondering if it's that we need to move that a, the grants coordinator in the school department will be the, whatever you call it, person of record, when the grant is written. So that, we will try to look at getting it done by this April 18 date, but as I said, I don't know everything that's involved, and we have a lot going on in the school department at this point, so I, you know, I just want to be careful about that.
Well, we were very lucky because the deadline, we would have already missed the deadline, but the deadline was extended.
So for purposes of this evening, if, the motion I'd like to make is that the grants coordinator within the school department oversee the project, and that that's, that's the standalone motion that satisfies the necessity that everything happened through the school department, correct?
Yes, but I would actually say, just because of the grants coordinator, why don't, could you sort of identify it as the business office, because I would be, that's something that sort of would, the nature of this work falls under what it is that I could do, my company could do.
Sure, I'm happy to change the motion. So I would move that the business manager, Ms. Rickett, within the school department oversee the management and dispersment of the grant, should we earn it, should it be awarded to us. That would be my motion.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, Andy.
Thanks, Maren.
Thank you.
Great, so then what I can do is follow up to this, is I can get you the grant application tonight, tomorrow morning, you'll see it in your inbox.
Tomorrow morning would be good.
Well, you'll see it in your inbox tomorrow morning, I'll have it tonight, and will be available to work with you guys moving forward.
Can you send that, can you copy everyone on the committee?
Of course.
So that we see that and can gain an understanding of other ways that we might be able to help in this tight window.
Yes, I don't think I have all of your guys' email addresses, so if that can be shared with me, then I can...
If you share it with me, then I'll share it with all the school committee members.
Okay, sounds great.
And you'll let me know specifics about where, when, next Tuesday?
Yes, I can work with you about that. I'll also let you know as well Nancy, so that you can attend on Tuesday as well, and then moving forward to have you as a part of the Energy Committee would be great as well, so we just meet monthly, so it's a little bit less...
All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Maren.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we'll be moving on to the public hearing and the proposed 2015 school budget. And to start, we'll have Superintendent Follinsby make her presentation on the budget. After that time, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in the audience who might like to speak, and then we'll have a discussion as a group here. So Superintendent Follinsby.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the fiscal year 2015 budget hearing, public budget hearing, and I wanted to start by describing some of the budget terms that you're going to hear during this presentation, because I know this can be confusing at times. So a needs-based budget, which you'll hear about, is a budget that provides for all identified needs in the district. So if an analysis was taken for every need that we had in our district in order to grow and to prosper, that would be the result of a needs-based budget. A level service budget is a budget that provides for all that is currently in place in the district. And a level funded budget is a budget that provides the same amount of funding as the current budget. Level service budget would mean that there would not be a need to eliminate any positions or make cuts to any resources in the district.
Next, we'll be moving on to the public hearing and the proposed 2015 school budget. And to start, we'll have Superintendent Follinsby make her presentation on the budget. After that time, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in the audience who might like to speak, and then we'll have a discussion as a group here. So Superintendent Follinsby.
Thank you. Okay. So this is the fiscal year 2015 budget hearing, public budget hearing. And I wanted to start by describing some of the budget terms that you're going to hear during this presentation, because I know this can be confusing at times. So a needs-based budget, which you'll hear about, is a budget that provides for all identified needs in the district. So if an analysis was taken for every need that we had in our district in order to grow and to prosper, that would be the result of a needs-based budget. A level service budget is a budget that provides for all that is currently in place in the district. And a level funded budget is a budget that provides the same amount of funding as the current budget. Level service budget would mean that there would not be a need to eliminate any positions or make cuts to any resources in the district. We would have everything that we currently have. Level funded budget would require the elimination of some positions and some resources, because as you well know, with all of us, the expenses of living every year and the expenses for transportation and personnel increase. So a level funded budget does not provide enough funding to maintain everything that we currently have. And now I am going to, whoops, walk us through the budget book. Whoops. And Ashley, my new technical director, is going to help me make sure I get this here where it needs to be. All right. So we have a picture of our wonderful new high school on the cover of our budget booklet. We do have this online at www.epsd.us. I did send out an all call to let you know. And city councilors and school committee members get the packet as well as our administrators. But I'm going to kind of walk you through it here tonight so that everyone can see what's in the budget book. So I'll begin with the mission statement and core values. This is the first page in our budget book. This is the mission statement and core values that have been in place for a number of years in our district. This is followed by the strategic plan. And this is the district improvement plan that is aligned with the district's mission statement and core values. It was developed in 2011 with the help of members from the community and school department. It has guided our work during the last three years, and every request in the school's budget is linked to an initiative in the strategic plan. The three major strategic objectives in the plan are student achievement, educator excellence, and resource alignment. And over the years, we've done a lot of resource alignment and resource allocation to meet the needs with the budgets that we've had. The second page of this. The next document in the budget book is the executive summary. This outlines the budget development process and the rationale for the proposed budget. As there were new school committee members, city councilors, and a new mayor, I thought it was important for us to paint a picture of the resources that are needed to continue to be able to grow and prosper as a school district. Administrators were asked to develop needs-based budgets, and these requests are the requests above a level service budget. They are the requests for partial restoration of what has been lost in the past and for the resources identified to better meet our current needs. These requests are not included in the proposed budget due to our recognition of the limited funding available to the city at this time. However, we believe that it was important to continue to put forth the requests that would help us achieve our vision for the East Hampton Public Schools. The next document is an enrollment comparison chart. Our enrollment has been increasing and is projected to increase again next year. We continue to make every effort to keep our class sizes low, and you can see the class sizes have not changed dramatically up to this point. Next document, this, this chart shows a history of the funds, it's a charter school and school choice information chart. And it shows a history of the funds that leave the district through the choice and charter programs and the funds that come to the district from choice in students. In the last three years, there's been a trend toward, a trend downward in choice out students and a trend upward in choice in students. When you see the dollar amounts not matching the increases or decreases in the number of students, this is due to extra costs associated with special education services. And this is a budget history. This budget history chart shows a history of the city appropriations to the school department. In the last two years, you can see an increase in percentage of funds from the city. A 1.9% increase in 2013 and a 2% increase in 2014. And the year before, there was a decrease in funding. And you can see the whole history on the chart. It is important to note, however, that these appropriations were not the amount requested for level service budgets for the school department. So the request was for a level service budget. The appropriation was not enough to fund a level service budget. The next two charts are about the programmatic impact of the funding of the school department over the years. The following documents show the impact during the last five years of less than level service funding. From FY 10, fiscal year 10, to fiscal year 14, reductions in funding from level service requests have had a cumulative impact of four point, almost $5 million on educational programming. And these pages outline then the positions that were caught and the resources and materials that were eliminated. The next pages are grant descriptions. These provide information on grant funds the district receives and how those funds are used. And again, you can look on the website and get a detailed description of each of these grant funds. Perhaps most interesting of all is this next chart, which gives a clear picture of how the funds have decreased over the year, from 1.8 million in FY 11 to a little over 1 million in FY 14. So our grant funds, and most of these come from the state, have been decreasing over the years. The next set of charts and graphs show components of the proposed budget. This bar graph is about DESI, which is Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, function codes for the way we set up our budgets. And they are administration, you can see them at the bottom of the chart. Administration, which is school committee, superintendent, business office, district-wide technology. Instructional services, which is teaching, curriculum, and grants, professional development, paraprofessionals, classroom materials. You can see that that's the largest portion of our budget. Other school services, which include health services, athletics, and student activities. Transportation, and you can see that our transportation costs are starting to climb. Operations and maintenance, this would be custodial, maintenance personnel, and expenses in the building, grounds, and phone system maintenance. And these costs have increased over the years. Our fixed charges are lease payments and insurance for equipment district-wide. Community services, which are, they do have an amount, but you can't see it on the bar graph because it's so small, are payments to the recreation department for use of buildings and fields. And tuitions, the last chart, last area of the chart, are payments to special education programs collaborative and collaborative vocational tuitions, but not choice and charter assessments. And our payments out in tuitions have steadily increased over the years. And you'll also see why that seems to be growing so fast in a future chart. This pie chart shows a breakout of the funds by percentage and the changes in numbers and percentages from 2014 to 2015. You can see in the chart at the bottom of the pie chart to the left that there's been a decrease in administration of $20,000, due in part because of changes in administration. And there's been a decrease in operations and maintenance, and this is due in part to funding savings that have been discovered since our new technology director, Ashley Barstow, came into, into our district. So we're very pleased about that. The next chart shows other funding sources. This bar graph shows the trends in other funding sources available to the district. These are the only other funding sources that we have. School choice reserves have decreased due to the necessity of using our reserves to balance the budget. You can see that at one point, we had pretty high reserves. And then with the lack of funding over the years, our reserves are down substantially. Our circuit breaker, these are funds that help to offset special education costs, and they're meant to support the districts. Funding from the state, this funding comes from the state, and funding from the state has decreased from the levels that were originally promised to school districts to help with special education costs. And you can see this reflected in, in those bar graphs. We have had to use our reserves and other revolving accounts as well, and that would be transportation fees, tuitions, and building use fees. And the last area are grants. And you can see, again, a pictorial representation of what's happened to our grant funding over the years. This chart shows the funding sources for the proposed budget. And this is a level service budget. The budget that's being proposed tonight is a level service budget. It does not add anything additional to what we currently have, but it enables us to maintain what we have. And I'm going to ask Andy to come up and walk us through the more detailed budget pages and, and then I'll return with some more information.
So clearly, it's very easy to see that. I'll walk you through what, and it's sort of a summary, sort of, it's a summary of all the, the top part you have is the funding sources, the bottom part is the capturing of the funding uses in the district, with the yellow being the amount that's being requested from the city for appropriation for FY 15. Technically, what it costs to operate the school system is actually, or projected for a level service, $18,138,327. The funding sources, that's on the far-left column, and for those of you, if you see of that 18.1 million, 409 is coming from school choice, $120,000 is coming from the circuit breaker. The other revolving accounts that Superintendent Follinsby referenced totals $55,000. And as of right now, with, we are being, I'll say, this is the one area, as much as we like to be cautious, that we're being, I'll say, a little more aggressive than normal, is that we are projecting level funding in our grants. So that's $885,000. So of that, you're talking an overall increase in the budget of the needs from FY 14 to FY 15 level service of 6%. However, with those reductions in the funding sources that we had available to us, the increase we're asking from the city appropriation is 9%, 8.9% to be exact, as to provide level service. And then the bottom part is the breakdown of those DESI function codes, administration, instructional services. So you see with the things, there's nothing new other than any mandated cost that the district is going to be expected to pay in FY 15. So that's what this chart represents. We have some history to show you, the comparisons over the past from FY 11 to FY 15 proposed. This next chart is again a breakdown of, this is the second layer of the onion, if you will. This is the administration, district-wide administration costs. How much of those costs are borne by the city appropriation, how much potentially from the other funding sources? And as you can see in the district administration, very little comes from any other funding source than the city appropriation. We have a projection of $10,000 coming out of a grant. Next up is instructional services. This is where the rubber hits the road of everything that goes on in the classroom and in the buildings. And this is where, when you see those reductions in the other funding sources, this is where it affects the most. And that with those reductions in funding sources, you're talking, just a, close to $300,000 in funding sources reduced from other funding sources that go to instruction in the classroom. So with that and the increased costs that we're experiencing, that more of that has to be borne by the city. This is the other school services, which is the medical, health, and nursing, transportation, athletics, and other activities. And again, this here, we have $20,000 coming from a revolving account, the remaining balance being requested from the city appropriation. Operations and maintenance, this is the safety and cleanliness of the buildings, the maintenance, heating, utilities, electricity. $8,000 coming from our building use and the remaining being requested from city appropriation. The fixed charges, very little, but it is the leases and other rental of equipment that we have, all that would be coming from the city appropriation. This next civic activities are things like the crossing guards, use of the facilities arrangements that have been made with the city. It's been a standing agreement for several years. You can look and see it's very little changed since FY 11, all that being funded by the city. And tuitions to other districts, this here, again, we have several funding sources that we use for these tuitions, circuit breakers, so the tuition revolving accounts that we have, and federal and state grants for funding of the tuition. So of the increase we are asking for, we do have other funds available to us that we are using to offset those increases, but those funds are reduced from the previous years. And that's it.
And I'm going to summarize now, and I think that, I'm hoping that this will be easier for everybody to see. So our proposed budget, the primary goals of the 2015 proposed budget are, first, to align the budget to the greatest extent possible with the district priorities and the school committee-approved district strategic plan, which would be 21st century learning environment for all students, small class sizes and high-quality staff at all levels, safe and supportive school environments, enrichment opportunities for all students, and up-to-date technology and technology support. And two, to assure further erosion of programs and services for East Hampton students does not occur. What this budget accomplishes, it maintains the integrity of the educational program in the East Hampton Public Schools. It ensures our schools remain competitive with neighboring school districts in our ability to provide 21st century learning experiences for our students. And it prevents the elimination of staff essential to providing our students with a quality education. A little background on the budget, this summarizes what you've seen in the more detailed budget book. We have had increases in operational costs, as have all departments in the city. We've had reductions in funding sources from grants, choice revenues, and other funding sources, our tuitions and so forth. The cumulative impact of reductions from 2010 to 2014 is 4.9, almost $5 million that we sustained over that amount of time. And this necessitates an increase in our request to the city. As our funding sources decrease, our requests to the city must increase. This is the history of positions that have been eliminated just in the last few years. In 2012, eight positions were eliminated. In 2013, another eight. In 2014, five. For a total of 21 positions eliminated since 2012. Additional positions were reduced from full-time to part-time, and funding for materials and supplies was reduced as well. And our elimination of positions and supplies and materials has gone... And our elimination of positions and supplies and materials has gone back, we've charted it in the other charts, at least to 2010. So there are actually more than this, but I just captured this in this particular slide. So the proposed budget is a level service budget of approximately eighteen million, eighteen million one hundred and thirty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. What this budget does not do is add any new positions. It does not replace twenty-two, twenty-one positions lost from 2012 to 2014, and other positions reduced. It does not replace lost funding for textbooks, materials, and supplies. But what it does is maintain the important personnel, programs, and services needed to maintain our current educational program. As I explained in the executive summary contained in the budget, which you can read online if you don't have a copy, the needs-based requests are included to show what would be needed to replace what has been lost over the years due to gaps in funding for level service budgets, and what is deemed as necessary to support our vision for East Hampton schools. We do not want to ever lose sight of our vision. However, we do recognize that the state, at this point, is only offering its cities and towns level funding, which means there will be an impact on the city of East Hampton's ability to provide for growth in any of its departments. Therefore, the budget I am proposing is a level service budget, a budget that will enable us to keep the personnel, programs, and services we currently have. With anything less than a level service budget, we will not be able to continue to grow as a school district. I do want to assure our families that we will continue to provide a high-quality educational experience for every child in our district. As the State Commissioner of Education noted in his visit to our schools last Thursday, "We are not a district that is working with very high revenue, though we have been very inventive with the money we have." These were his exact words. This has been, and will continue to be, the way we do things here in the East Hampton Public Schools. And I will end my presentation now, and there will be an opportunity for those of you who'd like to come and make a comment at this point in time. But I'll turn it over to Chair Deb Lusnia for the next part of our session.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, at this time, if anyone would like to come forward and come to the podium, speak into the microphone so everyone can hear, and folks who are watching us on television can hear clearly, if you'd tell us your name and either your position in the district or where you live, that would be great. If you could limit your comments to two to three minutes, and if you could refrain from coming up a second time until we've heard from everyone, that would be helpful. So would anyone like to come up and ask a question or offer a comment?
Hi, my name's Lori Schein. I'm a parent to a kindergartner at Center. I've lived in East Hampton for more than a decade. I've been watching it with pride as it has bloomed as a cultural destination and a small business incubator. But as a parent with two young kids, I faced a difficult decision when kindergarten came around, not because I don't believe in East Hampton or in the teachers at Center Pepin, but because I've been watching the funding of schools in East Hampton, and it's not adequate for them. For too long, I've been waiting, this whole ten years, I've been waiting for the education to catch up. And I've been waiting for a robust investment in our public schools to take East Hampton to that next level. But all I keep seeing is deep cuts that erode them further. And as you just reported, we've seen a cumulative impact of almost five million dollars on educational programming. Again, this year, the conversation is about fighting for level services. I realize that property values, which already took a hit during the housing crisis and long recession, something I'm very familiar with as a homeowner, are held back right now by our underperforming schools. There are studies out right now that even took Massachusetts into account and showed that property values will dip less in a recession in places where the schools are perceived to be excellent. That's something we can also do to insulate ourselves against recessions that way. Families look for good school districts. Good schools lift property values. When housing stock appreciates, the town can have more money to spend and can stabilize its institutions without letting the tax rates become overly burdensome for other citizens. One study from the University of Delaware finds that for every dollar of property taxes raised for education spending, home values rise by more than thirty-four dollars. It's a huge investment we can make. But it's only when we take that first step of investment that we get to reap those rewards for our property values, for our kids, for our city pride, for so many reasons that we all want to do that. So with the new members of the committee and the new mayor on board, I think an opportunity really exists for you to oversee a period of reinvestment in our schools. I don't know if we can keep the tax increase that built our beautiful and badly-needed new high school, if we can keep that on the books. But we need to not only restore the cuts in staffing and resources that they're asking for tonight, but we need to envision an even better district and a deeper reinvestment. A friend of mine who's on, whose child might go to the Chinese immersion school in Hadley, went to go tour her local elementary school last week to see, you know, what her choices might be. She had stuck her child in the lottery, but she's a firm supporter of public schools, and she wanted to go. But when she was touring the elementary school, she saw something that really took her back. There was a coffee can that had been set up to hold, to catch drips from a leaking heating pipe. It had been wired up to the heating pipe. But the coffee can had been there so long that it had rusted through and was getting rusty water on the bottom, on the floor, in the room where the children were eating their lunch. She was like, "What are my choices here?" That was a really embarrassing thing for me as a parent to hear, as someone who sends her kids to the public schools as well. They deserve better, and we, and I really think that Mayor Kado, with your, Cadu, sorry.
Cadger.
Cadger.
Thank you.
With your new tenure here, you have an opportunity to make this your signature, and I hope that you will. Thanks.
Would anyone else like to come up and ask a question or offer any comments?
Hi, my name is Amy Davis, and I am a .6 drama teacher at East Hampton High School. I am one of the positions that was cut a few years back, because I'm .6 now, and it used to be a full position. And I understand that that has happened. But I also see that there's a huge need. The students are extraordinary. The students at the high school are so eager to be creative and get involved, and there's, I can't be there for them. And it's very frustrating. They just put on an amazing musical production, the first one in the new auditorium, and they were amazing. They truly were. I guess, I just feel like we have this new high school, we have these new facilities, and we need to make sure that we take care of them and that we staff them so that they can stay nice, that they can be used by the community, so that we can service the students in the best way possible. And I just feel like it's important for me to go on record saying this, our students are really, really extraordinary. Thank you.
Amy, can you raise this attention? First of all, I want to say it's really brave for you to get up and speak as an employee, because I know that you feel like you're in a rock and hard place, so I appreciate that. I think that took a lot of courage. And can I ask you, just for my own curiosity's sake, you, as a teacher, holding a .6 position, how difficult do you think it will be for you in the coming years when you're looking for the future of your career to remain in a position that's limited at .6? Do you think that's a challenge for people in your field?
Oh, yes, I do think it's a challenge, although I think that because I teach in the arts, I think people are very understanding of how difficult it is and how teachers in the arts everywhere are holding non-full-time positions. So I think that people are aware that it's not a reflection on the person or the teacher. What I struggle with the most is the fact that I have to hold, you know, other part-time jobs outside of my position at the high school, which makes it so that I'm not available to them, to the students, to be there when they need for me to be there, after school, working on these projects. I have to tell them no. And I'm not there to be able to help nurture the programs that they really need, and they need to have somebody there. They need to have somebody there guiding them and encouraging them. And when nobody's there, it's not just, I mean, some of them are totally motivated to be there on their own. There are some great leaders within our student body, but they can't be there by themselves. They have to have somebody there to supervise them. And we can't do it for free, although many of us do a lot.
Hi, my name is Gina Wyman, and I have two kids. One is in the school district currently, she's a second grader at Maple, and the other one will be a kindergartner at Maple next year. So I just wanted to share that last year, when the override did not pass, and then subsequently when the two school adjustment counselors were cut, two students in my, right in my daughter's class, there might have been more, but I happen to know of two that were right in her class, did choice out both to North Hampton Public Schools where their override did pass. And I know that you didn't control that, but, you know, the school adjustment counselor was also a huge factor in at least one of their decisions. And I just want to echo everything that the parent who spoke said. And, you know, I didn't send my daughter to the schools for kindergarten, I sent her to private kindergarten. And then I really am making a commitment here, but I want to see the same commitment, you know, from the city. And I think on that needs-based budget, the school adjustment counselor positions were not listed as well. Is that right?
They were not, yeah. On a needs-based budget.
Because that's something that, as a mom of a daughter with an anxiety issue, who's IEP, you know, says something about counseling services, I would like to see that, you know, just at least acknowledge as part of the needs-based budget, even though I know that's not what we're going for currently, because hopefully one day, we'll be able to have school adjustment counselors back in the schools.
Hi, my name is Mary Barr, and I have three children at Maple School. I'm up here tonight to talk about the support of the teachers at Maple School. My kids have had great teachers. They are young, and they have many years ahead of them. And my concern is that what we're doing with the teachers that are great, that they are in classrooms that don't have enough staff in them, they are being literally burnt out by some of what's happening in the classroom. They don't have the extra support with the children that they have. My kids are so, they're really young, they have years ahead, and my concern is that what other teachers are not going to want to teach? If we continue to add pressure to them and add the workload that they have, when does it stop? So I want to applaud all the teachers that are here tonight, whether, what school they're at, but especially Maple, because I think they do an awesome job. My son, on a good note, my son was given, he went through an IEP for his speech, and thank you very much for that. He was given the IEP time, and now he's going to get support. But my son is bright, and he is being, he's not going to the next point where he can go, because he's only able to be at a level what the teachers can give him. So I wonder how more bright he would be if he could get extra support. So I think that the kids who are good and are bright are not given the level of education
Hi, my name is Megan Fraser. I'm also a parent. I have two children at Center who are thriving, great teachers at Center also. And I have one comment and one question. And my comment is about the adjustment counselors as well. I do not have children who actually necessarily have access or need to access adjustment counselors, but I do spend time in my kids' classrooms at times volunteering, and I see the benefit, and I see the children who are in need of those services, and I can really see how that is stressing not only the teachers, but all the other children in the class. So that's my comment. And my question for the committee is that I heard, I heard you say that enrollment is increasing, Mrs. Fowlesby, and I also heard that there are no additional positions being added. So my question is how we could maintain class sizes reasonably if, you know, I know in Center, at least, we've lost a teacher at a grade level, and that's moved up every year as that class moves up. But if another kindergarten class comes in that's as big as the classes have been, we're going to sort of run out of positions to move around. We're going to need at least one more teacher to keep things balanced. So that's my question for the committee. I'm not sure who.
Actually, that would be a question to me.
Okay.
So I think you've identified how we try to maintain the low class sizes and the good teacher-student ratio. We do move teachers around to the grade levels. You know, we have a certain pool of teachers, and we'll add a teacher at a grade level if there are an increased number of students. We do have bubbles of students who come through our schools. And so really, that is how we try to do it. We try to equalize at the elementary schools and at the middle school as well, the students among the teachers that we have. Our increase projected for next year is not such that we, it would make a dramatic difference for us. We do believe that we have the teachers to accommodate the number of students who are coming in next year. But I think you raise a good issue. If the enrollment continues to increase and we aren't able to put in, to put back the teachers we've lost, then that may be a different story. But we're confident that next year we'll have appropriate class sizes.
Hi, I'm Jackie Russo-Pereira, 39, Garfield Ave. I have two children at Center School. I love Center School. So, thanks. And I think what I'm going to say here tonight isn't going to make me particularly popular with people, but I feel like it needs to be said. First of all, it's great to see so many people here who are interested in the schools. That's wonderful. But I think if you have a chance to talk to the mayor, you'll see that probably she's not going to be able to fund this budget at what's being requested, and that might make her unpopular, but it's not something that I think we should be getting angry at the mayor about if it's not possible to fund it at this level. I think it's difficult right now. Budgets are horrible because the economy's not so good. And as you all know, the way that our budget's funded for the school is that part of it comes from revenues from property taxes, and part of it comes from this very outdated state funding formula. So that funding formula happened in 1993. It didn't take into, it, right now, doesn't take into account any changes in increased healthcare costs, any changes in special ed funding, or any of the technology needs that we have now. So 1993, things were very different. So what we're seeing now is that, you know, right now, all municipal services are having to be level-funded and work with that. So there's not a whole lot, there's no extra money floating around that can go, you know, towards one budget or another. And that's just reality, and it's a really horrible reality, but it's true. But seeing all you people here, right? So if we can't get the money out of the city's municipal budget because we know it doesn't actually exist, what can we do, right? That's the question. So you're all here, you want to help out. So here's things you can actually do. One thing we can do is try again for a Proposition Two and a Half override. It didn't pass last time. Maybe there's a way to reconsider how that gets out there and have a better campaign. What else? What else can we do? You can talk to your legislators about looking at that old, out-of-date funding formula. Let's go to them and tell them, this doesn't work anymore. We're not getting enough money. You know, communities that actually have a better property tax base, they can fund their schools at a better level than we can, because they have more money. It's totally unfair. We can push. You can, another thing you can talk to your legislators about is pushing for a graduated income tax in the state of Massachusetts. Won't necessarily make you popular, but, you know, if we're looking to have people who have more money pay more in income tax, that would help us out right there. What else can we do? Are there other grants the school department can be looking for? I don't know, but you guys all do. And another thing we can look at potentially in the city of East Hampton is it tax-exempt property. So we all know the Catholic churches had three big churches here. There's now one. They have a lot of excess property. They're finding ways to keep it off the tax rolls. Maybe we talk to Father Doug and say, do you really need all these properties? How about you sell them, get them back on the tax rolls? So those are some actual concrete things that we can do as a community to try and get more money for the schools. I don't think getting mad at other municipal services or getting pissed off at the mayor and saying she doesn't support the schools is helpful at all, because I know it's not true, because I've talked to Karen about this. So just to say, here are some things we can do. Why don't we try and go there? Thanks.
Hi, my name is Michelle Gagin. I was not envisioning speaking at all tonight. I want to echo what Jackie said, because I think that there are so many people here tonight. I've been to a few school committee meetings over the past few years, and I've never seen a room like this. It's obvious that we are invested in our children. And I think the school board is too, but we have a lot of obstacles. So what can we do? One of the things I want to know is why we're not thinking more grassroots. We have, I don't know, 50 people here tonight. We all have a few hours of time. Why cannot, why can we not get a volunteer group together to figure out, how many hours can we spend with our kids? How can we maybe develop classes after school? You know, there, there are so many talents in our community. Why not put them to use? We all work full-time, I would imagine. I do, my husband does. But there are a few hours that we could all spare. If we got together and we had some kind of volunteer committee, I think that we could find some real, concrete ways to really improve our education among our children. Foreign languages, arts, you know, all those are being cut. And those are so vitally important to our children. Sciences, math, I mean, every single discipline is, it, it just makes a whole person. And I leave from some of these school committee meetings thinking, oh, this is great, you know, we're all so, we're, we're all here, we're all invested, and then nothing seems to happen. So I would really like to see something from the school committee in terms of forming a community volunteer network of people that could really take this community from the grassroots and really make something happen within our, our schools. I, I, I'm not very eloquent. I apologize for that, but I, I really feel passionately about this. And I think that I see a sea of people out there, and I see some smiles. And I know that there's a whole community of people that were not able to, to come tonight, but I think that they would commit if we had something concrete that we could offer. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ingrid Florrie, and I have a son at Maple Street. I, I'm going to echo a lot of what I've heard. My biggest concern is, you know, we have wonderful staff. We have, we have good administrators. We have really amazing teachers in this district, really good service providers. And, and I'm concerned at the fatigue that I see. And I'm pretty involved in the school, and, and I see it. Everyone's stretched really, really thin. And, and that's increased over the time that my son's been at school, which is just about six years now. So, so I'm concerned about that. And, and I'm hopeful, I mean, I would love to be seeing that needs-based budget being proposed, but I see the reality, and I know that the budgets are really tight right now. So, but it's something to shoot for, and I really hope that at least the budget that's being presented tonight will be funded at the level that's being requested. So to that end, I'd like to know a little more about the process from here, and how parents and community members who are interested in, in furthering this proposal can support it. Can you speak, can you tell us a little bit about what happens from here and what other opportunities for public input and support there might be?
I'd be happy to.
Great, thank you.
Did you, did you want to?
No, go ahead, Karen. Why don't you, you explain? I mean, we can explain the process here tonight, and then you can explain what happens after that.
Okay, so you're interested in the process. This is the public hearing for the process. What the school committee has voted is to present the city, which would be me, the mayor's office, the Level Services budget, the 9% increase. They had looked at two at one time. One was a 20% increase, which was the needs budget. And the other is a 9% increase, and that is the Level Services. So that will be coming, the budget will be presented to me for, you know, approval and for funding. And what happens is, the entire budget is prepared. We've spent many weeks, the finance director of the city, Melissa's here, and myself. We've spent, I'm going to try to keep this short. We spent many, many weeks. We, what we do on our end, this is how the school presents their budget. What we do on our end is we meet personally with every single, every single department. And I'm just going to be really honest here. I don't want to be rude or insult anybody, but not once would any department that I know even think of a needs-based budget. They wouldn't even think of a Level Services budget. They come to me with level funding, which is horrible. It's very, very sad. But they come to me hoping to get Level Service budget and knowing that budget will be cut. It's pathetic. It makes me sick to my stomach. So I can't stress enough, I am not your enemy. This is a matter of funding. Our, you know, I think, I think the presentation by the school was excellent, showing, you know, the, the cuts and, and cuts in, in, in grants they've received, and services they've received. Well, this is one pool of money. The city supports all the budgets. This is one pool of money. And I think probably the most incredible thing we looked at today, and, you know, it's something more, and I don't want to depress everybody in the room, but I think it's something sadder every day when we start looking at it. Today, we looked at, and again, I don't want to make it confusing, but our, the funds that we receive are from the state. It's our local aid. That's where we get our money. Now, we looked at what we received, our level, our level budget in 2000, in 2009. That was it, right? Melissa, 2009? Was $1.8 million higher than today. I mean, if that isn't enough to paint a picture of why we are here in such a pathetic state, then that should say it. Now, what happens is, all the requests come in, and I, I can't tell you how much sleep we've lost over it, even tears shed, whatever. It doesn't do any good. The money is the money. There is no extra money. If I had it, I would be the happiest mayor in the state of Massachusetts.
Nancy? With all due respect, I think the question is about process.
Yeah, we haven't even answered the question. This was not a.
She's just asking, how can these, how can this group of people?
It goes from here to the city council, and then it's funded after that.
I'd like to finish, if you don't mind. I, I think that was a little rude, but I'd like to finish. I'm sorry if I was going on. I did apologize. I think you really want to know the process. Because what I'm afraid of here tonight is everybody has been called here to support the budget. Tell the mayor to support our budget, support our schools. Of course I support our schools. You know, I'm a member of the community, and my children went to these schools, and I know what the needs are. So after, so anyway, after that, we make our cuts. And, and the cuts are across the board. And then the budget is presented to the city council. Our goal to present it to the city council is, they meet twice a month, is usually their second meeting in April. And they either approve it or disapprove it. But I, I, I think my, my biggest fear, and again, I think it's okay if I talk. I think people really want to know the truth about the budgets and how they work and how they operate. And I welcome any person here to call me. I mean, I've been flooded with emails. Please support our budgets. I don't care who you cut. That's really, it's, it's difficult to get that type of information. My job as mayor is to, first of all, the budget has to be balanced by law. I cannot support, I cannot present a budget that is not balanced. And I cannot give out increases when we don't even have the money to level service what we have. And I'm talking level-funded on our end, not level services. So we will not stop working and trying to find every single way to, you know, to, to scrimp and save, to provide the schools with everything, with everything they need. Of course, the need is so strong, but that's how it works. I'm sorry if that was too long. You can feel free to call me anytime. I'm always here, the weekends, no matter what, or at my home. Email me, whatever is easy, and I'd be happy to go over this inside, outside, upside down with anybody that cares.
So, so just to make sure that I'm clear, so.
It comes to me.
From here, it goes to your office?
And then it goes to the city council.
And then it gets proposed to the city council, and they can?
They approve it or disapprove it.
They approve it or disapprove it in full?
They can, they, you.
Can they move around? Do they have the?
They can approve it, disapprove it, or cut it.
Okay.
They, they can cut it.
And can they change line items? I mean.
They can cut them. They can just cut, they can make cuts. That's all they can do. They can decrease.
They can decrease, okay. And that will be in mid-April?
Well, it goes to them in April. Then they send it to their finance subcommittee. And again, they will meet with all the different departments and go over it with them. And they usually vote on the budget the first meeting in June. If not, then their second, then they'll make an extra meeting in June.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the all-call coming out to let parents know that this is happening. I think it's an important educational piece, and, and I think it'd be great to have, you know, similar notification when, when the full budget process is happening, because I think it's, it's great to have the community involvement.
I think it's fantastic, the, you know, the involvement tonight. But I just don't want people to get the wrong impression that there's, there's money here, and we're just not giving it out. There is none to give, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jane Lohman, and I'm a parent at Center Peppin. And I had no intention of talking, nor do I particularly like doing so. So I just want to echo the parent who I don't know, who talked about grassroots. And I'm not suggesting at all that I don't think federal, state, and local funding should go to the schools. So I don't want to see this as an either-or proposition. But I understand very much the shoes that you're in in terms of how defensive you must feel right now, in terms of what it's like.
More sad.
Well, sad, but also I hear a ring of defensive, and that's not an accusation, that's just a, a note. And actually, Superintendent Fowlesby, I hear something similar in that. And I just feel like you're in positions right now where there's a lot of either-or positioning, and also a lot of confrontational positioning, which I understand, which, which polarizes us. There are eight gajillion people here, because we represent something much larger, and each of you is a part of that. And so one of the things that disappoints me about bureaucratic structures, of which, in which I work in a huge one, you know, anyway, but the idea is that it blocks effective practice. And the bureaucratic structure that we're all witnessing right now sort of puts us onto these oppositions and, and sort of diminishes the level of, of contribution and the, and the level of collaboration that we can represent. All of us want the needs-based budget. That's clear to me. And we may not get that this year, but we will continue to fight for that. And that's what this represents. And in the same note, what can you do, instead of feeling like, I can't do it, I'm sorry, there's no money? What is the alternative to that? We know there's no money. I mean, we are all trying to pay our bills too. But the idea beside that is, beside there not being money, this is a jackpot. And how do you think of your leadership differently, so that it's not a matter of just the bureaucratic budget strategy, but you've got a goldmine at your fingertips? You've got one of the most engaged communities that I've ever been a part of. And I've been here for about a decade-ish too. And, and that's something that's exciting, and I think that's growing. And so what is the collaboration here? Rather than feeling in opposition to you, I feel like, I mean, all, all you need to do is call me. Not all I need to do is call you. It's your job as a mayor of a, of a city that doesn't have enough money to find other strategies in the meantime. And not just a parent volunteer to organize volunteers, because those of us that choose to do the amount of volunteering that we do tend to be small in number, like Megan Fraser. She does tons. And we know each other. Those of us that show up in school know each other, and I hope everybody comes to Culture Festival. But anyway, I think that the, that, I think that the most important thing to know is that there is a mindset of leadership that has to shift in this generation. It's true in higher ed, it's true in K-12, and it's true in the organizations that are supposed to be supporting these educational opportunities. So the, the mayoral structure in a new mayor, it's not just about a new budget formula. It's about a new city leadership formula that I will participate in, and I consider myself equally responsible as you for that to work.
Thank you. And I can tell you that. In answer to your question, this is why I have meetings with people like Marin, to figure out how we can decrease expenses and how we can, first of all, decrease expenses is huge, so that we can use that money toward, you know, toward teachers and technology. And also, this is also why, you know, we look for grants. We look for money everywhere, in programs everywhere. And right now, we've had several meetings. I can also tell you, you know, with the high school, with the new high school, we were able to, you know, through being very frugal, would probably be the, the nicest word to use. Their little, by different things that were cut out of the project, we're hoping to put almost $500,000 back into it. A lot of it is technology. So, you know, to keep it high-tech. I mean, don't think for a second that I have not stopped. I meet with every single person everywhere. I view the buildings, I'm out there. It doesn't matter what department it is, whether it's police, fire, water, schools. I'm there, and I am not stopping. I've been to, you know, every single meeting in the Boston area, with every legislator, with our state senators, with every mayor. Every one of them is screaming to the governor to release the money in the state coffers that we need to provide the services to our community. So don't think for a second that I am just sitting back complaining. I am not complaining. I'm probably very active and very, I mean, I am passionate about this.
I think it's just a paradigm issue. Like, I don't think you should go everywhere. Like, can, where can you send me? Like, when can you send me to the fire department to take notes for you, so that you can be at the high school? Or where can you, like, 50 people could go to the 50 meetings that you just suggested, because it's like a really talented citizenry? And I feel like you're going to burn. Like, how are you possibly going to want to be mayor for 18 years, you know, if you do it that way? That's all I'm saying, because you can't do it either.
I have a lot of energy, and I love my job. And, but in the meantime, you know, there is nothing better than the word volunteer. We love it. We use volunteers anywhere we can, as I'm sure you all volunteer for the schools schools and know how vital that your, that your participation is. And I'm sure the teachers like, just appreciate you. So, we love volunteers, and we'll take them any way, shape, or form.
It'll help if that's coordinated, so that we can be effective. That would be great.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think whoever had that idea would-
And as you've seen, pushing, trying to get the grants toward, you know, those are things that we-
And that I appreciate. We all love the town, you know, so thank you.
Because it's made up of great people, I guess.
Right, right, yeah, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, I just wanted to piggyback on that last comment and, and just make the statement that our new mayor has been very open. We've had many conversations about the schools and the school department, and, um, and as, and the new mayor has started department head meetings, so that we all meet together, and there's a better spirit of communication and collaboration among the departments. And, uh, so, I, I just wanna reiterate how open you've been to having conversations about the school department.
Thank you very much for saying that.
Thank you. I'd also like to ask, Sue, would you be willing to put a blank piece of paper over on the table over there? And anyone in this room who might be interested in, in volunteering and helping out in some way, some manner, whether it be, um, you know, helping us lobby the state, state level for changes, or helping out on a local level, whatever kind of help you might be able to provide, it could come in a variety of shapes or sizes. But we'd love to have a database of people to be in touch with, to talk to, to, to put ideas, suggestions out there, and, and hopefully capture volunteers. So, if you would put your name, phone number, contact email address, email would be perfect, before you leave, that would be wonderful. And perhaps we can, and really go forward in a strong way with the spirit of volunteerism. Thank you very much.
Hello. I'm Tamara Smith. I am a city councillor in East Hampton. More importantly for tonight, I'm a mother of five. I have three kids in Pepin School, one son at Whitebrook, and one son at the high school. The administration can attest that some are a little more work than others, and I can appreciate all sides of this, how difficult it is. I'm standing up here tonight just to voice my support of the schools. I wanna be very transparent that, as a city councillor in East Hampton, I'm present at this meeting, and I'm hearing what you're saying. And I wanna piggyback on that and give you the opportunity to come to city council meetings as well. There is a longstanding tradition of almost having the school committee and the city council very separate, but that is something that we are working to bridge. So, I am very happy to stay after the meeting to talk to any of you about your concerns. I can have, I have my business cards, I can have you contact me. I'm an at-large councillor, which means that I represent the entire city of East Hampton, and you voted for me, that's why I'm here. So, let's work together and at least get these conversations continued. So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Joe Pichinski, and I'm the director of Public Works. I've worked for the city for 29 years, and I fully understand what the mayor is saying. And I just wanna let you people know that the school department isn't the only department that is in this predicament. And to keep it short, have you noticed the conditions of your roads as you drove in tonight? Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have two questions, but I've already gone, so I didn't know if I knew-
Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet?
Okay.
I have a question for the mayor and a question for Superintendent Fonsby. My question for you is, would you support an override? I don't know if you're ready to comment on that now, but that's, you know, we're sitting here, and I, I don't think that the last mayor was particularly supportive of the override, so I just wanted to know where you stood on that issue.
I think you're probably, like you said, it's not even anything that's being discussed at this point in time. I think what we're looking for are, you know, like, actually what we're looking for is volunteers and that type of thing. I have to, I have to tell you, overrides have been men, have been mentioned many times, many times in my office, on the street, and everywhere. And people, I, I know this particular group of people is very much in favor of them. Would I love to get the money for it? Absolutely. Do we need it? 100%. The, the overall thoughts on that is it'll never pass. Just to let you know, we talk about how we raise money. Well, we do raise the taxes 2.5% every year. Of that, we end up with about $500,000 of new money. Now, the high school project has not fully, the taxpayers have not fully received the entire hit of the new high school. So, I happen to be on the floor below this, which is the same office as the tax collector. So, as soon as people get their bills, they are screaming, and they scream, "No more overrides." They want, you know, we have to live within your means, they want us to live within our means. This is the money you have, you live within your means. So, I can tell you that the, all the voices that I have heard are all against, you know, are negative on it. And, you know, for a lot of different reasons. But, you know, these are the things that I've heard and the conversations that I've had, and more openly, you know, going, when I went door-to-door. But especially now, people are saying, you know, they're not, the public is not sympathetic to, to city employees, to, you know, a lot of, they're very, I think, not sympathetic. They think of these big retirement benefits we get and a lot of different things. It's, you know, you'll find that, especially, and it's not a matter of not, not wanting to support their schools, the elderly have a huge difficulty with their taxes. Because, you know, a lot of them bought their houses at $12,000. They're now valued at $259,000. They just don't have the money. They live on $800 a month and less. So, it's not that they don't want, they're against the schools, they just can't afford any more overrides. So, they've been, they're very loud, very loud and clear. But I don't think that has been anything that has been presented-
I was curious, and I thought people here would be-
-to the school committee at this point.
Curious as well.
But I can just tell you what I have heard, and I'm sure different people here, very different things, but it's been loud and clear in my, in my office.
Okay. And then, for the superintendent, could you, I, I don't know if, if you've looked at this, I'm guessing that you have, but could you paint a picture of what a level-funded budget would look like?
I, I-
I mean, do you know how many cuts you're talking about?
No, not at this point.
No.
I don't, because, you know, we will, what we have to do is, is get our number from the mayor, and then we'll begin to work on, on what it would take to reach that number. And I really couldn't begin to even guess at this point.
Okay. I just, I think that if you're looking to have new, young families come to the town, you know, frankly, this, our kids are more important than the roads. I mean, I know that that's not like-
Well, that's one thing that I really wanna address. That is the one, that, I think that is my, when we're talking leadership, when we're talking different things, what I do not want is one department to, to pit against another. That is just not good. It's negative, it causes negativity and negative attention of our schools and our city. You know, it looks like people don't wanna fund this. It, it, it's not true. Like, all these departments, and, and I can, I can tell you, you know, from, from 19, 20 years of experience, they, they are cut to, they are cut past the bare bones. I can't even call it bare bones anymore. And the police and fire, they are, they are vitally important. Your police, your ambulance, we have one, one police officer is in the schools five days a week. That's his job. He's not on the street. And it was funny, I was talking to the chief just this morning, and he was at, I think he was at the high school, and he said, "How many custodians do you have?" They said, "Four." He said, "Great, I have three police officers on the street." So, it, it, I just don't want anyone to think that, that, you know, put one department against another. We are, this is, this is a sad situation, and it's, it's a terribly, it's all related to state funding and, and lack of it. So, we're all in it together. We will all do the best we can. Like Nancy said, she doesn't even, can't even imagine yet what she would do with that type of budget. You know, you, like, what happens on our end is, you don't have a choice. You don't have a choice. You know, you just do the best you can. I can't tell you, the two chiefs that were here tonight, I can't tell you how many times they have reorganized their departments. You know, all of the, all of the cuts that they have had are before 2008. They are all down manpower, like, you know, same as with teachers. So, I just want to express that. Everybody is in this same boat. You know, there is nobody benefiting, and it, and it doesn't help if you start playing one department against another.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will say that, you know, since the mayor has started having us meet as department heads, and even before that, we, we, we're department heads in the city, talk with each other, and we all understand that we all have had to make cuts, and we're all not operating at the level that we want to operate. You know, we as a, as a school department have this forum for presenting our budget and advocating for what we want, and, and I believe that the other departments advocate with you, mayor. But, you know, we, we are fortunate to have this forum, and it's, I think it's important for everyone in the community to understand that every department in the community is, is facing the same kinds of challenges that we're facing in the school department. This happens to be our opportunity to share that with the community and to share it with you and to advocate for our needs.
And other communities too. I mean, I don't, I think everybody's well aware, this is happening statewide, you know, it's not just East Hampton.
Hi, my name is Fred Andreessen. I, um, I just had an idea, and I thought I'd share it while there's lots of like-minded folks here. Sounds like horrible options, but I hear two positive solution things coming out of tonight's meeting. One would be the, the energy efficiency improvements, which, which get us more money. It's like money from nowhere. It's just great. The other is the grassroots ideas that everyone seems on board with, which is great. So, just along those lines, I was thinking of, you know how companies, if, if one of their employees gets jury duty, well, they have to let their employee out to do the jury duty. Well, local companies here, local businesses could take it upon themselves to say, and to volunteer, and this is where getting the word out to all of you counts, is just mention to their employees, "By the way, if you wanna go help be an assistant in the classroom for two hours a week, three hours, whatever, you go and do it, the company pays you for that time, no problem. Just go and do it." And it, it's something that maybe a little bit of help from all the businesses who are already themselves invested in the community could, you know, it's, it's the only place I can think of to get money from nothing, which we've been, clearly it's not there. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marie Brown, and I'm at 35 Torrey Street. I'm a mother of a first grader at Center School. I also did not intend to speak this evening. I'm new to East Hampton and a very strong advocate of public school, just as a, one of the things I'm hearing in terms of this volunteer effort and feeling myself as someone who is very much one foot out of the door about leaving the school, because I'm concerned about it, and my daughter wakes up every morning and says, "I hate school." I think there is an enormous force of people that are incredibly creative, and there's a lot of unemployment. So, there's a lot of people with a lot of energy out there that, that want to give it. But one of the things about us as human beings is that we're pack animals. We have to have a leader, and I know Megan Fraser is, has volunteered to be a volunteer coordinator, but volunteering to volunteer coordinate means that you have very little time to coordinate all of that energy. And it's a great idea. It's an awesome idea that can go nowhere if there isn't something to actually magnetize it. There's so many people that couldn't be here tonight because they couldn't get babysitters, because they couldn't get away, 'cause they're single parents, 'cause they're unemployed. I mean, the list goes on. But there, the number of things that are simple that would massively change my daughter's experience, she, we have had very cold days on and on and on. What does that mean? They don't get recess. They sit and watch a TV show for recess. That means my child, who's brilliant, is jumping out of her seat and says, "I hate school. I don't wanna go." So, what do we need? We need some folks to volunteer to go and to be recess duty and take them to the gym, so they can run around for 20 minutes. They're one designated time as seven-year-olds to run around, and they don't get it because we don't have the funding for that? I, I'd love to volunteer, but I have a baby. Can I bring her in too? Like, what can we do? We need to maybe creatively allocate the funds to pay one person to manage all of those volunteers for the entire school system, not just center, not just the middle school, not, the whole thing. And I'm unemployed. I'd love to apply.
Just to piggyback on that thought, while our next speaker's coming up, I've often felt it would be great for us to tap into retirees as well, school, former schoolteachers in our community that might be able to devote some, some time each week to help a student or help out in some way.
My name's Jane Andreessen. Uh, we're relatively new to East Hampton. Our children, I thought I would just say something, because we chose not to put our children in the public school. We lived in Holyoke and then here, and although our youngest did visit the high school the other day and is thinking of going next year for his junior year, we, we had a very nice visit at the new high school. But, um, I, I have worked, I wanted to say two things. We've, I've worked in a couple school systems where there were budget cuts, and we implemented after-school programs using retired folks and folks who worked, uh, didn't work full-time. And we had wonderful programs that supplemented lost arts and lost, we had, I personally taught both a journalism class and a knitting class, and there were lots of others. There were science classes and it just, there was a whole list. And, um, the kids loved it, and it was, didn't cost the school system anything. And I will put my name on that list. I would love to help coordinate a senior citizen volunteer, or, you know, parent volunteer thing. And now I've forgotten the other thing I was gonna say. Oh, just, so, um, I think that strengthening the schools, I'm a bicyclist. I, I love to be out on the roads, so I could definitely complain about the, could complain about the condition of the roads, but education is so much more important. I mean, they're all important. That's, it's a safety issue, I realize that. But, you know, we have to be more far-sighted, and a strong education is gonna solve a lot of the other problems. It's gonna bring people, as, as other people have said, everyone's had great comments. It's going to bring young families here, it's going to increase the tax base, it's going to provide us with solid citizens for the future, et cetera. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Jackie Duda, and I'm your health agent here in town. And I did come prepared to speak, but in fact, all of the people before me have said everything I was gonna say. I'm really glad Mayor Cager doesn't want one department pitted against another, 'cause I really do like the school department. But just to kind of tap on what Joe Pip said from the DPW, "The school isn't the only department." And just to give an example, I'm one health agent in a city of 15,000 people. I work 34 hours a week paid, another 10 or more unpaid every week. And I had this wonderful plan. I've been here for two years, and I've got a five-year plan. At the end of that, I'll retire. But I've had this wonderful plan for upgrading our department, but I didn't even submit it this year. I was pretty well convinced by the numbers that I wasn't gonna get anywhere, so I didn't even attempt it. But in another like community, there'd be a lot more than one person like me. I'm really fortunate to have a two-day-a-week assistant who does administrative tasks, five days each day. So, I have a 10-hour-a-week assistant, and then after she's gone, I do the other 10 hours of work that she would probably be doing if I had a 20-hour-a-week assistant, when I should really be out inspecting pools and schools and restaurants and, you know, tattoo parlors and summer camps and addressing complaints that people come to me with. So, I'm just reiterating all the good things that I've heard. And also, it's amazing how many people are here. I don't know if you've ever been to a city council meeting? I've been to a couple where I'm the only person there. And so, this is a very impressive turnout, and I'm absolutely impressed with the idea of the whole grassroots, 'cause that was one of the things I was going to try to inspire you with, but you've just taken the words right out of my mouth. I think this city is on a tipping point of not just creative genius, but grassroots efforts. It's what I once saw where I live in North Hampton, many, many, many years ago. And you have tremendous potential, so I hope that you'll all follow through with some of the things and the ideas and the inspirations that you've been seeing tonight.
Jackie motivated me to speech. My name's Dave Mauder. I am the parent of three children in the East Hampton school system, the oldest being a senior. For 13 years, I've had people tell me, "Why in God's name do you leave your parents in that school system?" And every time I hear it, it makes me sick. For those of you that don't know me, I'm also the only department head in this city with children in the schools. Every one of their teachers knows that I'm the first one to carry the banner for these schools. The thing that worries me about talking about the schools are gonna tank, they're no different than any city employee in the city. When the budget cut hits, it's gonna be ugly. And if you want to know about level service budgets, or, excuse me, level funded and what they mean, in the fire department, we are at staffing levels lower than the 1970s. That's what happens with level funded budgets. We're no different than anybody else. I'm asking you and the non-school district employees, have faith in your administrators. If the cuts come, they will get it done. I moved to this town in 1990 and a lot of people said, "Why? You don't have to live there to work there." And then they don't understand why my kids come to school here. But I will tell you, if you don't have children in the schools, get in there. I'd hate to see any cuts come, and I would love for us all to get what we want. But when the smoke clears, that front row is going to get the job done. It's not going to be pretty, but our kids are not going to be stupid. And anybody that sends their children out of the district because of any cuts, in my opinion, is making a huge mistake. Thank you.
I'm just going to say one quick thing, because Dave reminded me of it. You know, we talk about monies and expenses and new monies coming in. I already explained to you how we raise money. We raise money, I already told you about the local aid. It's past 2009 funded, like, level funded. So, that was already pretty pathetic that we get 1.8 million less now than we did in 2009 from the state for our local funds. Off the top of our budget is about 1.7 million right out the door for school choice and charter schools. So, that's what we pay for people to go to, you know, other schools. It's state mandated, that's the way it is, comes right off the top of our budget. The other thing this year that will come right off, that's a lot of money. Think of what you could do with teachers and staffing and technology with over 1.7 million dollars. The other second thing that happens is this year, everybody knows about snow emergencies, we're going to be probably in about a $500,000 deficit for snow. So, we are going to start this year's budget at a minus 2.2 million, and that's where we'll start it from. So, when you talk about the schools and, you know, people that choice out and don't believe in your system, and actually, somebody was telling me too, you know, you think other school committees, you think, I mean, school districts, you think they have better schools than you do? They don't. You know, they're facing the same cuts that we're facing. I know there's, you know, different schools in a city nearby that most people love to choice out to, they think they have a great school system. They're barely above state level. Barely. They're barely, they're just one step ahead of being taken over by the state. So, you know, it's not always green around the other side. You know, our educators here are fantastic, the times that they give, just looking at the people here tonight, the amount of input that they put in, the amount of work that they do, our administrators are fantastic. So, they all deserve a lot of credit for what they do to keep things going. But, in the meantime, you know, it's not thinking that, you know, it's going to be better somewhere else. They all face the same thing, and that's why I know our superintendent, Nancy Fonsby, has been, spent a lot of time with the advisory committees and we're trying to, you know, keep a positive spin on our school, not draw negative attention to your schools. Everybody is here tonight. Now, I'm new to the school committee. As mayor, I sit on the school committee. There's never anybody here at a school committee meeting, never, unless it's a busing issue where it went on for three months, and the reason it went on for three months is because we can't afford to increase our transportation expenses. So, the fact that you're all here tonight saying you represent, you know, you're so in favor of the schools, it would be great to keep this type of momentum going and not just be here to tell the mayor to support your school budget. So, I welcome you to all the meetings and your input is golden to us. Thank you.
Thank you all very, very much for being here and for sharing your passion and your support for the schools. We are truly, truly grateful for your support. And at this point in time, we'll move to a discussion among ourselves about the budget. And I'd like to make a recommendation as chairperson that we vote to approve the budget that Nancy has put forth. Would anyone care to talk about that, or?
I think, probably, I'd like to make a, you know, make a couple of statements. I don't know if anyone else would as well. Okay, I'll go first. So, I think, I want to commend Nancy and the administrators. I know that it was an excruciating task to ask you, "What would you love to put back?" And let's put all of that together and let's look at that and talk about it. And now, let's set that aside. But what I'd like to kind of end this evening on, as we're moving forward, is really to concentrate on what the message is that we're trying to send. And I think that that's what Nancy and this leadership team and these faculty and parents are most concerned with, is that, you know, we have an exceptional administration and faculty in our schools, and we have called upon them to use these resources that they have, limited though they are, creatively, efficiently, to produce an incredible product for our children. My kids are having a fantastic time. Things could be improved, and things will be improved if any of us have anything to say about it. And that's our vision moving forward. So, I don't want anyone to leave here with the idea that we're in dire straits, that our condition is pathetic, or that any of us are looking at this as a lost cause. I wouldn't be here if that was the case, and I don't think any of the rest of us would. So, I think moving forward, I'd like to make a distinction between the grassroots, which I think is fantastic, and absolutely without a doubt we need to take advantage of, but it cannot take the place of level service funding. Level service funding is what pays our administration, our textbooks, our supplies. Grassroots would be a beautiful complement to that, to add enrichment that we can't afford at the moment for arts, crafting, engaging with the community and forming relationships to maybe change the minds of some of those seniors who can come in and deal with our children one-to-one and say, "I've gotten to know these children, they're beautiful, they're incredible. I'll take that $200 a year. I will find it and I'm going to vote for that override." So, I think tonight is an opportunity to take that step forward in a positive light, in collaboration together, to say, "This year, we're going to hope for level service, but we're moving up and beyond next year." And I would love to hear from the mayor and from other people, "What is our plan for the next three to five years so that we're not faced with this again and again and again? What are we going to do to increase our revenues? What are we going to do to increase this grassroots enrichment?" You know, that's kind of the platform I'd like to move on. I don't think this is meant to be, you know, a lashing. I think this should be an opportunity to ask the questions and formulate that plan. We need that leadership in order to make anything different, to move in a different direction. That's it for me.
I just want to add, before I start, I want to publicly apologize if, for an interruption that may have seemed disrespectful. It was simply, we were losing a handful of people and I wanted to address the process piece, because I want everyone in the room to know that I don't think anybody around this table comes with any possible proposal. The one before you tonight, the needs-based, none of it is intended to be divisive. Joe, Fire Chief, we all live here. We know that everybody's been cut to the bone and below. We know that the money doesn't really exist. We know that Karen has one of the hardest jobs on the planet. We know that Nancy has one of the hardest jobs in this city. I personally believe with my heart and being just extremely transparent to you right now, that any conversation around a needs-based budget is not about creating division, it's not about setting one department against another, it's certainly not about asking anybody to get defensive. It's about putting essentials out on the table so that they are transparent, so that as a community, we see them, and then we have to hold each other accountable to own them. Because if we don't know what those needs are, and the word "need" to me doesn't even begin to articulate what these needs are, they are essentials that we have lost over the course of five years. Plain and simple. So, it is not about divisiveness. It is not about asking you, I won't get on Facebook tonight, I won't call you tomorrow and ask you to attack Karen for finding money that doesn't exist. I believe with all my core that the money doesn't exist. I also believe with everything in me that you must know, we must make transparent to you what we are missing. Not what we want, not what we hope for, what our kids and what our staff is missing that's essential. And that's the reason for looking at level funded, level, I get that's too confused, I'm sorry, but the proposal that Nancy's put forth and what is called a needs-based budget. And I just ask you to really consider understanding that, because I don't think anybody around here is coming at you with asking you to support the school and not be the DPW or not the fire. It's about just understanding that as a community, we can't just keep band-aiding over Band-Aid, over Band-Aid, over Band-Aid, over Band-Aid. And you look at a, what did you say, was it $5 million in four years of cuts? These are our kids. When it all comes down to it, we are all here for our kids. That's the bottom line. And I just think we need to, we need to hold each other accountable in the city council's office and the mayor's office. You need to hold us responsible, we need to hold Nancy accountable, to start thinking outside of the box, thinking creatively, thinking strategically, and doing this fairly quickly. And that's my two cents on. Sorry for interrupting you. I didn't want to lose people because we don't very often have a crowd like this. And people were walking out the door and there was this magic question about process, what do we go next? And we got, we got more than sidetracked on defensiveness and the worry over department versus department. And I was like, "Oh, we're, these people are not going to know how to, where they go next." And I think that's important. So, I just hope you all stay engaged.
I have a question about some of the numbers in the report, just for clarity. I tried to catch the explanation on the FY14 to FY15 change in tuitions to other school districts. It's not charter and choice. That's an $800,000 increase this year, and I missed it, I apologize. Could you remind us again of?
Those are tuitions for out-of-district placements and vocational schools.
So, and what's the explanation in that growth in the, as you track back over the previous, going all the way back to FY11, it was at 1.8 million, and it fluctuated all the way up to 2.4, but that was over two years. So, suddenly in one year, we're going to see an increase that's greater than four previous years. What's making this year such an outlier in that? I apologize, I missed it before.
Okay. I didn't even really address it in detail, so you didn't miss it. But it's, we've had some move-ins that occurred when the budget was built last year, and so these are the annualizing of those tuitions, plus adjustments made for tuition increases from the Operational Services Division. So, we have new enrollment in the budget from '14 to '15. And I think if you go back, I've been reporting that we've been able to absorb some of those this year in the budget, but this is now the annualizing of that for FY15.
Right, because I mean, again, the math is eluding me a little bit, but this looks like 14% in the overall budget, right? I mean, an $800,000 increase on a $2 million item that, I guess, and I understand where it's at, and, but I think, and I know we're going to lose a lot of folks here, but really it's in the interest of education, not just my own. But when we talked before about money from nothing, that's not necessarily money that, I don't know how to phrase, that $800,000 doesn't just happen like an increase in healthcare costs. We all understand immediately why that kind of item might go up, but an $800,000 increase in a $2 million budget item, I mean, $800,000 is at the core of what we're talking about here. So, I would ask that we devote time in a future meeting to, and I know that I've missed some, so maybe I should just get an education outside the formal meeting process as to how we can anticipate that. Because we could work really hard for a year, and if we saw an increase like this again next year, we would be devastated by it. So...
Just, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I know we'd be more than happy to do that, but there are some things, and not that I want to just wash our hands of it, that are out of our control.
Right, that's what I mean.
There are rates, the rate-setting agency for the state for approved special education programs sets the increase on those tuition rates, that percent increase that it can go up. That's factored into this as well. The rates for the vocational schools that we pay Smith-Vogue, we have the amount that, you know, that's factored in there as well. We get assigned fiscal responsibility for a student by a state agency. That's in there as well for things that have occurred this year in that, that are out of our control unfortunately, but we are fiscally responsible for.
Right, and I guess, and I know that you want to respond to this as well. Part of what I wanted to share, and maybe some of the folks who are interested in grassroots kind of, when we talk about state funding formulas that are complicated, if we could rectify this funding phenomenon, that's 800, we wouldn't recover it all. But I think I said 14% before, my math is really bad, it's 40, right? It's a 40% increase. It's a 40% increase in one item in the budget, and that's big money. And it's mostly outside of our control because of rules that are established by authorities that the folks in this room can influence by, just as they want to speak to the mayor here and persuade her about setting priorities and the way funds should be expended, we can exercise that voice in that political process and address that. So, I don't want to hold people up more tonight. I wanted to make one other question, and Andy, I just, I want to be sure, I guess I want to go, these are two parts of tough news. I have said to folks that while we're discussing three budgets, I keep thinking of five. There's a budget that's not here, that for all the reasons that have been said, we didn't present, and that's visionary budget that really does what I think all of us in our best moments imagine would ideally educate the children in this town. As an example, we know that language instruction in elementary schools is far more effective than waiting until students are in seventh, eighth, or now ninth grade. So, there's a visionary budget that's not even on the table here. There's also another budget that the mayor alluded to, which is related to your 6%/9% discussion here. We're requesting 9% from the town, from the city, even though we're only going to increase expenditures by 6%, because we're losing 3% independent of anything that the city does. So, there's a fifth budget that's below level funding, that needs to be part of the context that we're aware of as we engage in this discussion. And I think that, and I'm glad that a lot of folks in the room have gone home with, I hope, more optimism, and I don't want to temper that, but realistically, I mean, we were there when the numbers were run by us, and I think that that's part of what we're ultimately going to come to have to face. And that number's right here, plain as day. A 6% right, increase in expenditures on education requires a 9% increase in expenditures by the city. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that we had great discussion tonight. It was so wonderful to see all the people out here, the parents, the admins, the teachers, the other department heads, and it was, it was nice having a positive outcome, a positive spin come out of this meeting. So, I thank everyone for that. And again, I look forward to a day when we can fill that needs-based budget, even get one or two things off from that needs-based budget. I wish that we could, but if, you know, I have everything crossed that we'll get the level service budget, so let's hope for that.
Yeah, just real quick, I know, I've been here a while already. Thanks to everybody who came out. You know, over 15 people came up to speak and they weren't just parents, they're people who have kids in the school, people who don't have kids in the school, people who work for the schools, you know? And it's just so invigorating that we have that kind of enthusiasm. And we talked at our budget workshop meeting about getting the conversation started and realizing the conversation was started, that we had the administration with the school committee, that we had all these different departments already getting together. And Tamara said it when she was up here earlier, now we've got to continue the conversation. And that's the real takeaway, is that there's, as much as we all want the visionary budget, and we all want it, really, really great things are happening in East Hampton schools. And that's the takeaway, even if the numbers don't look like that. So, thank you guys. Thanks.
I'd also just like to say that I think we are very, very fortunate that we have a mayor who realizes the importance of education in a city, importance of education to a city, and we have a mayor who, who fully understands what's being presented here and who wants to work with us and provide the best possible education for our students. And in turn, you know, we can work with her to hopefully achieve that goal, and we just are very grateful and fortunate that we have the mayor that we do that is so supportive. Are we ready to move forward?
Do we have a motion? We don't?
Do we have a motion yet?
We don't have a motion yet.
I move to accept Superintendent Follinsby's proposed budget for fiscal year 2015, the proposed level service budget. Do we have a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstaining, the budget I want's not on the table.
Abstentions? Okay. Motion's approved.
Look at everything still left on the agenda.
We have a ways to go, yes.
Thank you, everyone, for leaving now. We really appreciate your presence.
Okay, moving on to the next segment of our agenda. We have subcommittee reports and finance subcommittee. Do we have a report?
I have notes. We did meet. We did meet and I do have minutes from that meeting. And we also, is this the time where we should be moving to accept Deb Lusney on the committee as well?
Oh, yes, good idea. Mm-hmm, thank you.
So I move that Deb Lusney be included as a member of the finance subcommittee?
Second.
All those in favor?
No.
Opposed?
Did we, did you vote Peter on the policy subcommittee?
Not yet.
We'll do that next.
There was a vote to.
Her second hit the motion, Dan. Okay. And everyone was in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so minutes will be forthcoming.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
And do we need to do a chair now or we do that in subcommittee? We do that within subcommittee? Yes.
All right, the policy review subcommittee, do we have a report?
The minutes are in there and I thought we had already seen it. But there's minutes from the February meeting in here that we had actually discussed prior as regarding the busing issue. So that is in there. But then, so I guess at this point that I would move to add Peter Gunn to the policy subcommittee.
Second? Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
So welcome to our committee, Peter.
Keep me away from the money.
Okay, moving on, CES update. Do we have an update, Bonnie?
Wendy?
Wendy?
I was wondering where Bonnie came from.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm so sorry, Wendy, I'm so sorry. I always want to call you by, I don't know why, so sorry. I sent an email to you, Madam Chair and Superintendent Follinsby earlier today, that Bill Deal, is that how you say his last name? The new executive director for CES, I think he's meeting with you Nancy tomorrow morning.
Yes, he is, tomorrow.
And I told him that I couldn't attend, he had my name on there. But I believe, I don't know if they forwarded you guys the articles of incorporation, they were supposed to send it to you Nancy.
I don't believe I've gotten.
And so I included it in my email to you today. And how that works next steps is we vote on it, has to be unanimous vote. Deb will sign off on it, his chair goes back to CES. They have to have all member districts unanimous approval to move forward. And I'm excited Nancy to hear what, I think you already know Bill, but he's a nice guy.
Yes, yes.
I'm excited about moving forward. And the next meeting's not until May, May 14th.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jordan Burt. What a patient woman you are.
Finally, Jordan. Aren't you glad you came to this meeting?
Jordan's our student representative and she's going to give us a student activities update.
All right. Well, the foreign language club is leaving in less than 30 days to go to Spain and we are.
Yeah, are you going?
Yeah, I am going. So we're all really excited about that. With spring starting, we have a lot of new activities, like you said earlier. Prom's coming up on May 17th. But the sophomore class for Easter is also hosting a breakfast at the Easter Bunny on the.
Oh, wait, when is that?
It's, oh, the 12th, April 12th. And also on that day, later in the afternoon, there's a volleyball clinic for sixth through eighth grade girls who want to get involved with the sport.
Jordan, can you go back to the Easter Bunny thing, where and when?
It's at the high school, April 12th. I know it's in the morning, I'm assuming around 10.
And there's some like nominal fee or something donation?
There's, I'm assuming there's donation because it's for the sophomore class, Easter Bunny.
Nice.
The junior class is sponsoring a golf tournament that will be coming up around Father's Day for anyone who likes to golf. Our athletic director, Mr. Seeland, just retired and we all really loved him. And so we're wishing him the best in retirement. We're going to miss him. Also, SAD has been very active, they're starting to plan Mystery Hampton. I know everyone likes to go to that and get a good laugh.
I said this last year and I'm serious, I want to be a judge. Or is that wrong? I don't know.
I don't know.
Jordan can communicate that.
I'll talk to Ms. Dunn for you.
Could you just explain to everybody what SAD stands for?
Oh, it's Students Against Destructive Decisions. And they work on trying to work with students not texting and driving, not driving under the influence. And they work, they go to like package stores and liquor stores to make sure that they're not selling to minors and they just try to keep students on the right path. And then lastly, National Honor Society is starting to sell shirts for the Heart Walk. They're $7 apiece and all the money that we raise for that will go directly to the organization to help support heart issues.
Great. Jordan, can you go back and tell us, just remind us where you are going in April? Where is the destination, the foreign language trip?
We're going to Spain, we're going to be spending time in Barcelona and Madrid. There's a layover on the way back home in London, but we won't have a chance to see anything because it's only about like eight hours.
Sounds very exciting.
And Jordan, on the sale of the T-shirts, is there a contact person or a way that?
Mr. Sheen, he's the head of NHS. So if anyone wants to buy shirts, you can contact him through the school.
At the high school?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Good job.
Thanks for being here, Jordan.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, the superintendent's report.
Yes, I just wanted to mention for those of you who didn't see the article in the Gazette that the Commissioner of Education, Mitchell Chester, visited our schools last, our high school last Thursday. And some school committee members had an opportunity to meet with him as well as the mayor and some of our faculty. Two of our students took him on a tour and he was very impressed with what he saw in our schools, in our high school. The visit transpired due to one of our high school teachers, Kelly Brown, a history teacher, being asked to do a keynote at the Hyannis Conference, a joint conference for the Superintendent's Association, MAS, and the School Committee Association, MAS-C. And she gave an amazing speech, I think we talked about that earlier this year, received a standing ovation from the whole crowd, about 200 people I would guess. And so following that, the commissioner invited her to speak at a board of education meeting on the Common Core and its connection to her classroom. And following that, he called me and asked if he could get an invitation to visit our district. And I told him that I had already called his office and issued that invitation the day after the Hyannis Conference. So we received word last week, I believe it was either the Friday of the week before or the Monday of that week, asking us if he could come on Thursday. So that was kind of short notice. And I happened to be away. So a big thank you to Shirley Gilfeather, my Director of Curriculum, and Sue Colby, my assistant, and Vito Perron, the principal at the high school, for getting everything set up. And it went beautifully. We're very pleased with the article that was in the newspaper. And if you haven't seen it, please go online and have a look. It was a great experience for us. And that's the end of my report.
Now we have some matters for action, we have the minutes. February 11th meeting?
Oh, right here, sorry. And I guess that was yours too, but.
Okay. I move to approve the minutes of the March 11th, 2014 school committee meeting. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Was it the?
I need to stipulate that that is, that was a budget work session. Thank you.
So that was the March 14th budget work session?
Yes.
Okay, then I can vote.
All those in favor again?
Yeah.
No, okay. And I would like to move to approve the minutes of the February 11th, 2014 regular session, school committee meeting. Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. Can you repeat that one more time? Yep, we're approving the minutes for the February 11th meeting, we had the motion and the second.
Oh, okay, so we did that in reverse. We did the work session first.
Correct. Yeah, it was on time.
Okay, all right. Is that clear with you, Sue, are we clear?
Sue, what did, what date did you get for the budget work session?
The budget work session was March 11th. And the school committee meeting was February 11th. Okay, very good. We're good?
So I have to abstain, have we taken the vote?
No.
Okay.
Not on February 11th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have to abstain, I wasn't there.
Okay. An abstention? Okay, warrants and payroll.
Sorry.
Okay.
I move to approve the school payroll dated March 20th, 2014 in the amount of $485,607.13. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, last one. I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated March 20th, 2014 in the amount of $368,718.11. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did you raise your hand outside?
Yeah. No, no, no. I voted for.
Everyone was in favor. All in favor. Okay, that's all set. Motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request for Whitebrook Middle School to Connecticut.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.